There we go.
Like the, all the meetings are ordered. First item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, the universe.
Well, calls. Here, Brian here, Jeff.
It's here.
David's here, he's gonna step out, is that acceptable?
Yep.
Okay. It'll be. Right, as a meeting that's properly notified, are we recording?
Yes.
Alright, um, next on the agenda is welcome visitors and public comments. We said one, but public.
We said public comments, I'll. Or with any, all of it, I guess, right, or any school, but I just really want, I think it's necessary to give our little little kind of sun for ourselves, a little big public shout out if we can. And you probably realize that verbal sounds are really hard to come about in halls. Here, we as individuals, I want to name, so to be highly proud of our high school, has been a long-term subs for our couple of science and English, and not just Brad, but all the ones that I imagine or share, you can imagine how hard it is to be a teacher, let alone a sub that comes in and has to relay and manage learn the kids, this was all good, been tremendous, and you will be here daily, if it's not your loss to turn petition, but from my brother who. At our middle school, we have Joaquin, Mr. Saldon, and Spock, that's a long-term subs for three teachers' events, they're all eternity or eternity leads, again, on standing individuals, I could just steal a little time.
Kelly, do you have your mic?
So, and real missing as well, we have staff who fill in for me, we also Karen help us in the form of Hudson, teacher retired, that's who's here, and so, you know, these are just some of the mainstays, there's probably a few others, but these individuals, without them, we'd be in a bigger world of challenge, we already have staff filling in for each other beyond this long-term subs, so, I think it's really important to recognize and know that these people that's doing a really, really difficult job, and there are districts that offer more money, to get some benefits, and people are going to be here for their particular reasons, so, I think it's worth noting, I'll share those names again, for recognition from the board too.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, next on the agenda, highlight on youth, fifth grade using breakout boxes to practice critical thinking skills.
So, you okay, alright, so, well, while I do this too, if you would pull up on the exhibit, she has a video, Amanda that you like to share, but, our highlight on you tonight, Carrie and Amanda shared two awesome things, and kind of focuses on our building goal of starting the health, I connect with kids, and make sure we're engaging, and finding something that we have in common, things that we can kind of build that community when, that's getting the adulterments of winter of February, and we really need to kind of persevere and push through, and these are the things that the teachers are laying at the foundation as we start the year.
That helps, sure.
Hi, um, so. Great, I have library class with the kids, with the new schedule, I have them every day for seven weeks, which is actually more time than I've gotten in past years, so I've been a little creative in looking at high standards and figuring out what kind of things can I add that will really add value to kids, and one of the things in the information technology literacy standards, which are what mine are called, stu- super great name. They talk a lot about teamwork and collaboration and problem solving and critical thinking, basically things that could be applied to any academic area, so, I decided to channel those standards and what I know kids need more of, building teamwork, connecting with each other, connecting with me, into using these really cool kits that I bought a couple of years ago, they're called breakout EDU kits, and basically what it is, it's like an escape room in a box, so, the box comes with a whole bunch of different locks and boxes and reflection cards, and then you can also sign up for their online platform, which has a bunch of pre-made games, or you can buy games off like Teachers Big Teachers, and so I've been having the kids do a couple of physical breakout boxes, but then they also last year because of COVID, they started a bunch of digital breakout rooms, and I just had the kids practice with those today, and they were like, so, I did a breakout box with the kids week and a half ago, and it was Minecraft themed, which they really enjoyed, and so I have a little video kind of showing some clips and pictures of them working through that. And stop okay, when you finish. The big one, so the big one is these two clues. Wait, so there's two things underlying the story, perimeter and area, did you find the perimeter and the area of scheme seven?
Yes.
What numbers should you come up with for that?
Eight and seven here is.
Eight and seven. Remember, you need to look those definitions up on your Chromebook. So the kids really enjoyed it, for the Minecraft game, there were four different blocks, there was a word, a direction, and then two numbers, and they had to do a little math, they had to look in a book to find the letters for the code they needed. They ask me almost every day, when are we going to do one again, because I think they like the team building aspect, and I think they like problem solving, even if they struggle with it, you'll notice I was helping a couple groups, they get hint cards, each group gets three, and some of them wanting to use their hint cards right away, and some of them are like, no, we can figure it out, I got it. But I really like that they're getting those critical thinking skills in a different way than maybe they don't get in their academic career. There any questions?
Sounds like fun.
That's good.
So. Um, in his mass, they call productive struggle, where they let kids struggle, and they don't tell them how to do it, and, but you get to a point where you get frustrated, then it's non-productive struggle, and that's not good, so how do you balance that, where they don't get so damn frustrated that they give up?
Yeah, so the first time I did it, there were five blocks, and they got free hint cards, and there were two teams that didn't finish, so I'm like, okay, well, I'll take away one of the blocks, and maybe modify some of the clues, and kind of build that stamina, so, but I, I'm going to try one, maybe in two weeks, but it's like three lots, but they don't get any hint cards, and we're just gonna see how it goes, and the digital games that they played today, they didn't get any hint cards, and they did pretty okay. So.
One of the things that, and I went, I went visiting this seventy, eight years ago, but it was a third grade class, and they had a problem, and he let the kids struggle, and then he stopped, and it's like, okay, how are you figuring it out?
Yeah.
And other kids shared, like, I didn't have a clue, you know, one kid might be, I didn't have a clue, but when Johnny said that, oh yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
And then it, so they, it was collaborative, without the teacher giving a formula, or giving even him.
Right.
Like, okay, now go back to it, and so other kids would move over to the one that he understood, and it was Johnny bought a big screen TV on the internet, and it was forty-eight square centimeters, what was his reaction when it came in the mail? And, you know, they need to know, I mean, they didn't even, that was a question, and he just said, go to work?
Yeah.
And, you know, some kids got manipulative, they got centimeter cubes, and got forty-eight of them figured out, some of them used little dots, some of them knew the formula, but not everybody did.
Right.
And then they shared, like, oh yeah, I remember that, and so it, I just wondered, in this, is there a way for inner team to collaborate, to say, oh, you know?
Maybe, I don't think we did like one box for the class, and each team had a different song, and then, like, every ten minutes, you switch.
I don't know, I just, I think the collaboration was educational.
Well, absolutely, yes.
But I really liked that productive struggle, because it's all about critical thinking.
Which they can never have to watch.
Yeah, no, it's awesome, it's great.
Any more questions?
Looking forward to hearing about it later in the year.
Yeah, hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda actually has one for tonight, that, that's all before you.
A lock.
That's the last agenda item, your line is.
Took it out of the room.
I gotta blow up mine, and I did not get it to you. See if that works, I don't know how to make it work. You make it right, or you?
I can, yeah.
All right. So, for art, we were told to, to come together for a first few days, is, get everybody back together as a community for the school, so I decided to kind of think ahead for just a community, entire school project, that we can put it at the art show, the art show is here, I like to have a large, community-based project, or something where everybody can have a part of it, and maybe the art isn't just for them, it's for everyone, so, what I'm doing with my classes, and I'm just going to do that every time I start a group, is we're going to make a friendship quilt square. I don't know how to do this, yeah, sorry. And I'll do this in the classroom, alright, so, they're each making a square for this friendship, well, this is the one we have hanging up right now, so we've gotten started on it. So, first days, we try to reserve for fun, I don't do any kind of rules, or what they need for class, or anything, most days they come in, and we get started messy, get messy right away, partly to develop relationships for me, partly so they know where some of the materials in the classroom are, so for this, we decided to do an oil pot style project with colored paper, and they had to learn how to transfer the designs, so that it would slip back and forth and around, because it's a circle, but it's four pieces, and so they had a little bit of a struggle with that for some of them, and we talked about the history of quilting, and how that translates into community, and how they used to be quilting bees, this is a painting by Grandma Moses, if you ever heard of her, that is a real artist, my husband thought it was a fake name, so, this is one of her paintings, she's a quilt artist, of one of these quilting bees that came in the forties, and people would get together, and they'd work on a quilt, and then gift it option to a friend, or to maybe somebody who's struggling, somebody who's getting married, that they know in the community, so for ours, every student on their first day will be making their own quilt square, not construction paper, it's not an actual quilt, so we don't have the materials to do that, but, and then they'll add it to our friendship quilt, so through the whole year, anyone who's had art will be added to it, so it'll be a giant artwork that hangs across the whole wall, and all of the students will be represented in it, in their square, so they're, like I said, they're often made to give away, so we're going to be gifting it to our school, so that whole community can see us all together as one. Oh, this is, oh, so I have a video of a couple of the kids just talking about their square, that, you know, why they put different things on them, they were nervous, by the way, you'll see some of them are like, oh.
I'm scared, maybe once I put two on it, maybe square because I'm trying to find certain ones that, and maybe there's something I think is missing this next year, season, and I put, put it on to February, because one of these, I love, love town. My book, my quilt square, because I was, I was a teen on my books, so this mess, and plants, I'll be a writer in writing, in that new lot.
Tell me if you can't hear them.
My name's. This is where the good. Lennon?
These are fifth graders?
Uh, the whole school is getting into it, so it's all of my, my entire group of students, so the whole school will be on the quilt, a few of the eighth graders won't be, because I don't have all the eighth graders, but anybody who's taking art will have a square on the quilt, so hopefully.
Hi, my name is Tash, and on my quilt square, I have a, I have an operation, because it makes me calm.
Some of the rabbits, it's, I mean, I'm just gonna.
My square office, motion anxiety, cause I don't need my shoes.
I shouldn't have talked about.
Oh. They're beating them, they're putting fancy bars on their clothes, and they're just. I want to dress them up, and it's fun to be high next to your mom.
She was outside her comfort zone, she did a really good job, so, that would be a few examples, and some of the kids just kind of talking about, I think that's what we had on here, so, this is what we had for our, for our quilt, and I'm just going to keep adding on to the side, so it goes across the wall, and hopefully hang it up at our show at the end of the year. So, that's my kind of thinking, so, any questions about the quilt square that we're working on, or anything else?
I love it. Very cool.
Yeah.
There will be in our show. I mean, fingers crossed, it'll happen.
Yeah, so, as long as everything's good, that's my, I like having one big, everybody helped with our project, with our show, so. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And, next on the agenda is comments. By board members and superintendent. Um, so, so first one on here, put on the agenda, general updates and questions, I just put this on here, just so that if we have questions for Tim or others, it's like, this is the time to have them, right, so if we have board questions, this is the time to bring them forward to the board, to bring it to the whole board, instead of kind of one-off things for, for Tim, right, we have to be able to respect his time and everything, and then if it's a board discussion, or board level discussion, it should come to the whole board versus board members, so, I'm kind of put this on here to put on the agenda, have the chance to have the discussion here, and then free up Tim's time, and so.
Include this.
Look forward, and include everybody, so everybody's getting the same message at the same time, and we don't have things kind of going around in different areas, and just, in respect for open meeting laws and Tim's time, so, anybody with that, does anybody have anything, general updates or questions?
Is everything going good? I haven't got too much, I haven't personally got much feedback either way from public, but, and I watch your dashboard all the time, and I watch other schools dashboard, and I think that we're right in line with them that had more restrictive rules, but, as far as COVID goes, I think we're falling somewhere in this spot.
So, yeah, that's clarifying, everything going good, or how are things going with COVID?
Yeah.
The question, yeah, yeah, I, I concur, we're right in line, I mean, we didn't expect to have zero cases.
That's what's mitigation.
And, right, we have it, um, to a point where we've had, they call virtual, or short-staffed, or anything, you see the staff numbers?
Yeah.
Are great, um, you know, to me, it's a, it's a probability thing, right, seems like the elementary students are getting it more now, because they did before, right, so, older group got it, and has community built up, built up, but, um, yeah, um, yeah, one or two emails a week, just voicing concern about safety, and maybe we should, you know, be wearing masks, and, so, got that communication going back and forth, but, one piece of information is helpful, like, it'd be helpful to know if it's elementary, middle, or high, you know, twenty-one students district wide, is that, so, we changed that, still could protect some anonymity and confidentiality with students, because there's sixteen hundred, or staff, not so much, it's only twenty-seven-three, but that seemed to be well received, and that, that was important to kind of put in a negative perspective, as well as, what percent is that, so I added the number of percent, a percentage of students and staff that are currently.
Is it, that's an updated number of students, too?
It is, yeah.
It's sixteen-seventy-three or something like that?
Sixteen-seventy-two is best guess from last year, right, but now the third Friday count is, I asked today and updated.
And we gained two staff, right?
Yes. Correct.
Yep, yeah, I've been watching it lately, so, and then, yeah, I've seen a nerd out on that stuff.
Again, meet weekly with county and the area, county superintendents, Hudson.
I think the county average is starting to, to back down, seven-day average, a little bit.
It was, is it in the thirties?
Or not, I didn't check, they didn't have it again today, so I don't know what average good numbers were, so, I haven't either.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I mentioned what came up next door, related to COVID.
Sure, so.
Yeah, so, patient next week.
Yeah, so, we are waiting to benefit committee meeting with teachers, just before this meeting, and you know, the federally mandated ten-day COVID is over at the end of the month, and we decided not to have a district ten-day COVID starting this school year, and it's come up, and it's kind of in every building, and the one that came up today is someone that's daycare mandatory closing, I mean, we don't have mandatory closing, but the county still is, so they had a positive in, in-home daycare, so she had to shut down for twenty days, so, yeah, two families that don't have daycare for twenty days, and could, we consider bringing back the ten days, can we use sick day, I mean, discussed lots of alternatives, and basically, long and the short of it was, Tim, talk to your admin team about how we're supporting a teacher that has to be out for ten or twenty days, that may or may not have any, if they, technically, well, the rule is they could not use their sick days, because their kid isn't actually sick, if their kid was sick, then they could use their sick day for their own, so that, so they've asked for some accommodation, and, basically, the, David and I said, Tim, come back, talk to your admin team, figure out the financial implication, and come back, do something sooner rather than, if we're good, so at the next meeting, probably.
On the board agenda for your consideration, might be on the next, next Monday, because we meet next Monday.
But I thought it was, it had been raised before.
Would probably be in the general, we're trying to keep it. Well, I guess that's to be determined later, do we, what next Monday looks like, if it's truly board learning, or?
And it's come up before, just with the dropping of that, Pete family, teachers are still going to have issues, and they don't want to come to school sick, so we have to make sure that we don't have people coming sick and not being honest about their COVID situation, so, lots of things for Tim to consider, but, we didn't make a decision next door, but it was like, thanks for raising the issue, let's see what we can do. If two, just to save free information, you had two thousand COVID days last year.
Were used.
You, that were used.
Because we.
Mandatory close contact.
Mandatory close contact, actual sick, whatever it was.
Oh, vaccine.
Two thousand. Two teacher days.
Staff.
Staff, total staff, so it's not an insignificant problem. Just update, it, it will be coming next time, no decision, just, it came up an hour ago.
Speaking of, you know, staff shortages or stuff, right, those are some implications that we've discussed, but um, the feedback is overwhelmingly positive, and staff's very appreciative, and including the admin, seeing, you know, how our staff is really stepping up and covering, because we knew we're short on subs, but they're really stepping up and covering, and it's appreciated, just increasing that rate from fifteen to twenty-five, so, thank you, and the feedback on that is overwhelmingly positive. Working. Uh, next on the agenda, Project Mallard, update?
I don't ever look at you. Basically, what happened was, in our, over the last time, Warren. Uh, going. We're going to break down, as far as working with the village on moving forward with trying to tweak things to allow the project to go through.
I mean, comprehensive plan.
Right, yeah, the village of Roberts voted for working together on a comprehensive plan, and tweak things, because one entity voted no. It stalled for now, the reason I say, oh, is. In speaking with someone who's knowledgeable about local government, it sounds like the village could potentially annex the land that's needed for the project, whether the township wants that to happen or not. Yes, is that maybe the route that the Project Mallard folks want to try to push, is to push the village to annex the land anyway, and tweak the launch land on their own, I have absolutely no, no knowledge of the village wanting to do that, or saying they're going to do that, or thinking about doing that, or anything, this is just a, a possibility, because I wanted to know, is this truly dead in the water, is there nothing that can be done now by the folks for Project Mallard, that have done, you know, that issue, and technically, no. But. That's the information that I have at this point.
Just today, I spoke with the guy that their company had the, the roof on that building, and he had told me that they're now going to Cedar Rapids, but.
Cedar Rapids, yeah.
I don't know.
I had heard that.
I don't know how far that is, what that means, but he said, yeah, that our bed was still good, now would you I don't know how far that is, what that means, but he said, yeah, our bed was still good, now we just have to travel more to. You know, just the river fund, so.
So no updated impact on the school. Cool.
All right, uh, follow up on the staff's going process. Shannon?
I talked to Timmy Santos about it and she's going to have each building make their own schools. Another high school will make the sponsor here and the bus garage. So buildings will already have their spot in their buildings.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
We just have to deliver a bit of our scratch and should figure out what the cost because.
Yeah.
School boards.
Yeah.
So yeah, just no delivery needed. It's just, um, maybe giving the, the bill and splitting it up.
Right.
Cause the only thing we're able to do.
Yeah.
Definitely down the path is. Do you usually stay in mingle?
He didn't have time to mingle because he was really.
I heard in every building.
Every building.
Land. And literally, yeah, and I had helpers with me in the vehicle too.
So yeah, once that's said, do you want to still, um, mingle and you want to, do you want to maybe draft a, a, a note of appreciation? That can be emailed out or?
Did they have time to mingle?
Was it seven fifteen they said?
When we did the don, uh, whatever, whatever day that was. In the spring, I went to the elementary school and spent some time there and they seemed to appreciate just having a conversation kind of went off. Half the people did and half the people wanted just to grab it and like get out.
Yeah, I think drafting a note of appreciation definitely is, it's something easy and we know if we get to everybody. Who's the date?
The twentieth.
The clerk does that, is that correct?
Yes. Right.
It's a big.
Well, the agenda is right. Let me, yeah.
He who gets the crayon picks the color, so I don't want to get common.
I'll get something.
I.
I alter.
Okay. That's great. Um, uh, next, this is superintendent annual goals. Um, so, so I know that, I know we had kind of talked about having Tim start it. I mean, I, I get Tim rolling up kind of a, or cascading up, which is generally down, but, um, kind of up. The buildings, the various buildings for kind of across the entire district. But it just, it feels like we should. Put the structure in from the board, what we're thinking around the mission and the vision. A little bit to tie that portion of it together. So I would like to spend some time probably next meeting, just kind of shaping that portion of the goals. Or at least kind of high level, what that looks like. Or, or the other option is like, I can, I can sit down and do it, but hey, I'm picking the color of the crayon, I guess. Then and I just, I'll just do it then, right? Which is completely fine as well. Um, but I, I think it would be good for us to like participate in that portion of it versus Tim picking his own kind of framing it up.
Perhaps I'm having long term goals and then he has his fruit breaker.
Well, yeah, so yeah, but more towards like the big picture goals. You know, so we want engagement, right? Like how are we, how do we think we would measure engagement or, um? We want to talk to you about like how Tim would manage his direct reports, right? Like his management, right? That would be us talking about that, right? Like how we. Cast create the specific learnings per building, right? Then Tim's got to roll that up to like a district because we don't have that. But I think kind of those, those big ones, we should really be involved in forming those. You know, we have the old ones as an example.
My concern was that the admin team has met through the summer and established their pillars for the year.
And.
And then we come up with something that forces them to throw all that work out. So I, I guess I'd just like to see the admin plan, so at least we have a basis. And then we can say within this.
Yeah, for that portion.
Yeah, here's what we think is in, you know. Community engagements judged by passing a referendum or whatever the metric is. I, I like, I, I'm.
But I think we need the data as a data. So we are shooting. Yeah, I know it's going to be collaborative, but I just, I was, I just asked, we had a discussion about where do I start to get the three pillars? And we've got my, my evaluation, they don't quite align and we want to give the evaluation more to law. I like to get them aligned, where do we, where do we start? How should we start? So that was, so the discussion would lead us there.
Good.
So that'll be next, next week.
What should we do to prep for this? Like what do you?
I mean, I mean, kind of like review the goals, kind of think about like, so community engagement, right? That's one that generally we would write because he represents the. You know, the entire district to the community, right? So just like, what does that look like? Does that? Do we want it to be participation, like attendance and extracurricular activities or, you know, like including concerts or whatever? Or like, what do we think that looks like? Is it? Passing the referendum, which I, like, that's kind of like a yes, no, which feels like a little.
Yeah.
Um, different, but just like whatever that is, I think just kind of thinking through what that, what we think those things, you know, what critical items? We would like that align here, kind of bigger picture versus kind of the three pillars. Cause I think we kind of weren't fully aligned last year a little bit and it's, I don't think it's fair to make Tim choose which goal. If there's a conflict or, or, you know, like steer one direction or the other, have him choose which one. He would follow. So.
So, okay, I'm like one piece of paper, share, put that on the piece of paper, have the. Teams, three pillars, and I think it's helpful just as a point of reference, just the goals that you had last year. Not all the commentary, but the half a dozen of goals or whatever, then at least we have a point of reference.
Okay.
So our homework would be to look at that. What you might put on the list.
And, and knowing some, I mean, some of the goals that we're going to give like to, that you end up with like at a CEO or executive level, some of those are. They're not always smart.
Right, they're not necessarily there.
Right, because it's sometimes they are, right? It's a. Sometimes like it feels or. Things like that, so it's a little less harder to write in the line. Any questions? Uh, next to the scheduled presentations by guests and staff members. And for nine is the financial reports.
Will we go to the bank balances of August thirty first, twenty twenty one? And the citizen state day checking was one million four hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and thirty four dollars and seventy eight cents. The citizen state day money market was two million five hundred and five dollars and seventeen cents. The citizen state day money market fund forty six was fifty three dollars and seven cents. Citizen think the money market suicide prevention was sixteen thousand five hundred and three dollars and twelve cents. With the account balances of three million nine hundred and thirty six thousand twenty one dollars and fourteen cents.
Hold on, the camera. Close.
See, no discussion, we just approve whatever you say.
Well, that's not how I presented. Uh, next is a consideration of the consent agenda. I went through it, I don't think there's anything, does anybody have any questions? Any further comments or anybody have questions?
I'm good.
All those in favor?
I.
opposed? All right, uh, next on the agenda, administrative report, student enrollment update.
So, um, again, we're, we always look forward to the third Friday count and you know, you hear how many kids, you know. Showed up at school and, uh, that'll, that'll be finalized by the end of the week. And again, that third Friday count is in that middle right column there, you can see last year was sixteen seventy two. It's complicated, um, I can explain in greater detail once that comes in. But again, uh, in regards to this document, we're at one thousand six oh three, where we left off last year, fourteen ninety three. Now there's an asterisk there because we had, uh, more students doing virtual last year. So if you see, uh, the virtual full time is currently seventy three. Last year we were about one fifty three, I think. So let's take those eighty kids, put them back in seats, add under the fourteen ninety three, that would get us about fifteen seventy three. So I say all that to say, it looks like we're up about forty kids, uh, district wide. Take the kids that were virtual from back in seats, we're still sixteen oh three. Um, and with that said, uh, then, you know, our virtual charter school will continue to grow. We always lose a lot to graduation. You know, a year ago, we're at two fifty seven, we're at one seventy two thousand, that's first time like annually where it's went down. But again, that asterisk with COVID and had so many more kids, but, um. We were between charter and our virtual, just over four hundred kids last year. So again, that was a big number. Um, I would anticipate it not getting that big this year, but our, our charter school, I would. So with all that said, remains to be seen, but it appears we're, we're up about forty kids in seats overall.
Tim, what was the budget? What did you estimate for the budget for this?
We estimated flat resident enrollment. And we kept our open enrolled in dollar amount stable. Um, I was just looking at that earlier today and it looks like we might have to revise that downward a little bit. We were hoping to get some, you know, more special education students and then that type of thing. So I'm going to look at that a little bit more. But yeah, we'll definitely see a few changes. When we set the levy up. First. For eighteen.
Eighteen.
For four K kids required to go to four K or is it?
They're not.
Okay, so that number ninety seven would be. We're not training lower or anything, so.
Compared to other classes, you know, and then. Right, yeah, for instance, you look last year, you know, we ended at ninety eight and, uh, you know, we're at, we're at four, one fourteen kindergarten. Some of those might have been our childhood as well, not necessarily, those could be three year olds too, but that's really typical. We've been, we haven't been at a hundred for a long time, but we don't. We've always ended up with over a hundred in kindergarten. Yeah, okay. Uh, it looks like, uh, yeah, ninety. Last September or, or one fourteen this year. Yeah, it's, it's following the prediction by Hazel Krynart's thing about, you know, pretty much steady, keeping steady, doing maybe slight increase. And our biggest increase would be our virtual school. Our old kids, so our open role kids, as you can see, tends to be positive, uh, difference in one hundred and sixty four kids.
Uh, next on the agenda, the key work of our school board. Or I can admit Josh about that, I'll, I'll take this one and nobody else helped out the last year. Uh, versus Luke Ritchie and Pat Hook, congratulations and thank you for making it twenty twenty one. I eighth grade trip to DC, a reality or perseverance and preparation is admirable and we truly appreciate your relentlessness to make this trip happen for the kids. Um, and then, uh, next Jeremy Gibson, Dee Dee Cost, Laura Fern Weber, John Lee Buckle and Taylor Moe. Thank you for taking your time out of your July to assist with the DC trip. We truly appreciate your willingness and effort to make this trip happen for the kids. So thank you to all of them. I think about like, even with this one, taking time out of your summer. You know, we don't have a really long look here. Uh, next, this discussion on future district needs and priorities.
Really nothing update, the, the work spent down in the community task force, which you're all aware of.
We're just sharing information at this point, right? Nothing's coming back and we're just getting to the point where the group's going to start working.
Yeah, post card, should have been here, my lock's history. I think it was.
Looks like this is. Maybe get your cheaters out.
Yeah. You seem longer arms. I need to cheat yet.
I do.
Okay.
Pretty athletic.
Um, all right, uh, core gen items, consideration of resolution authorizing the issue, issuance and sale of not to exceed six million in general obligations refunding bonds. Give it thirteen A.
So we have been working with Brian Brewer. If we can get him up on the screen.
He's got it here. What was it, something was?
Brian brought down the house.
Good evening, I can see you. I don't, I don't know if you can see me.
No, I switched it back. Here we go. There we go. Brian. Evening, Brian.
Good evening, good to see everyone.
Good to see you though.
So, uh, Kelly, do I need to share the slideshow or is that in the board packet already and just talk through it?
Um, just.
It's in the board. Brian has it. Well, I haven't.
Someone that has beard.
Yeah, we haven't. Yeah.
Everyone has it, Brian.
Okay, thank you. And this, this should be relatively straightforward for those that have been on the board for a number of years. And, and as recently as this past December and January. It's a very similar concept that this board in this district has actively managed. Uh, the outstanding, um. Bond, municipal bond debt related to prior referendum, uh, uh, investments. As well as, uh, the energy efficiency project, which is what we were talking, talking about this evening. Um, on the, on the third page, you see the interest rate chart that I show each time I present to the board. Rates continue to be low. You hit the refinancing of, um, your prior debt issues perfectly in January, in January. At basically the low, um, in modern history. Which helped you to lock in one point seven million of interest cost avoidance. Interest rates moved higher in, in, uh, February, March, April. And in late June, July, uh, interest rates started to move back lower. Uh, as we are now approaching, um, the redemption date on. The, um, district's energy efficiency loan from twenty, two thousand thirteen. So if you flip to the next page. Um, that these page four, five and six are the detailed schedules that Tim and Jen and I talk about. Um, I included them here mainly because it's, it's a reference of. The referendum approved, these, these three pages are specifically fund thirty nine. And they're the referendum approved debt issues. And page four shows how low the prior debt, how low the interest rate on the prior debt was. It, it interest rates between two and three and a half. Page five shows what you refinanced, uh, the, those issues to in January, which is zero point seven five to zero point nine six. And zero point eight to two point one. That reduction in interest rate is what saved the, or will, will save the interest cost of one point seven million, as we discussed earlier this year. Page six is the, um, current payment structure. Uh, of all referendum approved debt, as you have been doing, and I, um, understand it's part of the budget development process for twenty twenty one. And heading into twenty one, twenty two, um, you'll continue to manage that debt levy to be opportunistic with paying down. Uh, future debt obligations and positioning the district for future capital needs. Um, so this schedule will continue to change as, as we implement that plan. Heading to page seven, this is the issue that is remaining, uh, with interest rates that quote unquote are high. Relative to your, your January issues. The remaining debt from twenty twenty three to twenty thirty two. Has interest rates currently ranging from two percent to three percent. Uh, that debt is eligible to be, uh, paid off in full on April one of two thousand twenty two. So if we lock in new rates later in October, early November. And settle that issue after December one, you can replace those rates with, um, new rate, new tax exempt rates as shown on page eight. So that. That range of, you know, two, two percent to three percent. So let's call it, you know, a blended average of about two point seven, two point six percent. The current conservative estimate shown on page eight. Um, on the middle right side of the page, uh, under the five million, five ninety five. The AIC, which stands for all inclusive cost rate. The AIC, which stands for all inclusive cost rate. Is estimated at a one point seven, so you'd be shaving a full percentage point off of um, that prior debt. That reduction in rate for that amount of uh, remaining uh, principal repayment results in the far right column. Of annual reduction in the energy efficiency levy of thirty two thousand approximately. Or in aggregate, a little over three hundred thousand during the remaining payment term. Uh, currently, the this, the one point seven is a is a conservative planning estimate. Um, uh, right now, you're approximately point two better than that, so saying it a different way, if we were able to finalize right now. Um, you'd be closer to one and a half percent. Um, and that if if that holds over the next few weeks while we finish the paperwork and get the credit rating in 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 line. Um, that could add um, an additional forty to fifty thousand dollars to the savings uh, by the time we finalize. Any questions on the macro objective here and and ultimately the you would, the the action this evening is is approving the parameter resolution. That directs the president and clerk to work with Tim and Jen and I. Uh, once the paperwork is is ready to to get the district into the market and lock in um, the current. Um, taxes and interest rates that are available.
Brian, Jeff, the um. When we did the energy efficiency, one of the requirements is that we do an energy audit every year and prove that the. Energy savings offset the cost of this, does that change? Is the is it the bogey? The original issue or does the bogey go down with this refinance?
No, you still need that uh, measurable utility savings uh, to offset. The amount you carry through the energy efficiency exemption to the revenue limit. So what what this exercise is doing is lowering the the, from what your original resolution stated.
Right.
Um, we're trying to lower that top line number by this roughly thirty thirty to thirty two thousand. Such that that measurable utility savings is then deducted from that new lower level. So ultimately, this far right column would pass through as a tax reduction. Related to that energy efficiency investment.
Thank you.
So. With no other que- the the final page is this is this sample timeline. Um, uh, we've been developing the official statement, we've been working with Tom Griggs, your your bond attorney. Uh, putting resolutions and and um, uh, legal documents together. We, Tim, Jen and I uh, spent the morning with um, a few folks from Standard and Poor's. Updating them on the financial condition of the school district, highlighting all of the uh, positive long range planning initiatives that the board has implemented. Um, and we expect that rating back in the next couple of weeks. Um, which would, you know, pending your approval this evening, which is again, a a parameter. Uh, resolution that delegates the final sign off to the president and clerk. Um, we would finalize that paperwork and look towards late October. Uh, for a date to sell this issue into the market and finalize the rates pending the closing date, which would be uh, after December one.
So Brian, can you just briefly explain to the board the difference between the last refinance uh, and January and this one?
Uh, the they are very similar in in nature of what we were trying to do, both of both of these exercises are. Uh, uh, sourcing new. Uh, debt at low at the lower rates to reduce the interest cost. Um, when we did the uh, previous uh, two refinancings. Those were in the fund thirty nine account, which is the referendum approved debt pro- portfolio. Um, and in at the time in the market. Uh, we were seeing better rates from private placement lenders, so banks that wanted to buy it into their portfolio. So instead of going through the credit rating process and and selling to tax exempt investors. Um, in the broader market, which is what we have historically done for the district during my tenure with with working with you. Um, we took advantage of that uh, pricing difference. In in January, uh, again, ultimately to still achieve the goal of maximizing the savings. Uh, so this this exercise is is not different from that objective. Um, the the primary difference is that this will uh, be a full bond of bond issuance sold to multiple investors in the marketplace. Uh, seeking your your long term credit rating. Um, ideally, it maintains at the double A level uh, by Standard and Poor's, which is uh. Two notches from their highest uh, available. And um, you know, and ultimately, we're we're trying to lock in the lowest cost of funds as well.
And Brian, the reason we didn't do this before is these weren't eligible for prepayment debt.
Correct, correct, yes, we were watching it back in January, but given that you had, you know, ten months, eleven months to to. Navigate to get to the prepayment, because had we sold it prior to. The redemption, the ninety days prior to the redemption date, which is, that's the key to the December one date. Um, it it would have been sold as a taxable issue. Which um, is fine, the difference is the investor is expecting a higher rate of return. Uh, if they have to pay federal tax it tax on the on the income. By waiting to this point, we were, you know, and watching interest rates kind of bounce around throughout twenty twenty one. Um, you know, we're in a spot where. We're able to lock in rates that are better than what we would have been able to have achieved had we done the uh, this refinancing back in January.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm going to move the resolution. As distributed. Second.
Further discount. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? I'm carried.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Saving our taxpayers two million dollars so far this year.
I'm doing what I can. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Waited to sign. Odds are good, I still waited to sign there. Alright, that next one is a consideration of changing board learning and special meeting dates to Wednesday for the remainder of the year. Um. A question, do we want to do that this one or do we want to do it next meeting?
It should be.
Yeah.
Wait, yes.
That's kind of my.
You.
Table, we need a motion to table.
No.
Remember, so just can't move. It seems like something that you would do, right? Um, uh, next is others, the uh, WSB all regional meeting, October twelve.
Comment to that, um, Kelly printed a sound just FYI from WSB. Cool measures for added for regional meetings, uh. Uh, due to the rising COVID cases, WSB is streamlining the agenda, implementing a safety protocol to allow for the in person meetings to continue specifically. Requiring attendees to our face covering during the meeting and show proof. Of COVID nineteen vaccination or negative COVID nineteen test within seventy two hours to attend the meal. And then move the in person pre meeting workshops to an online format, so what's the other option? So FYI, I think so far Jeff is the only one signed up. I'll be the one person, okay, so.
It's an online option, it's still yeah, sign up for those. Uh, next is a legislative conference on November sixth. Reminder for mine. And then the stake agreement on the nineteenth and twenty first. Next calendar year.
When will you order rooms?
I want to say that's typically October.
So we kind of need to know next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't, we can reserve whatever.
And always cancel. So, but it. Hmm, I'll double check, the one hotel requires.
We'll double check on that, we should, we should make the decision, at least for the hotels to reserve them next four days. I have that on the agenda or.
Sure.
At least make sure we, you know, these are.
Important upcoming dates, I covered four, uh, next Monday, uh, uh, board learning, special meeting at the district office. Um, I think you can read the rest of the days. We talked about the breakfast already, so. Um, with that. Stroll some. Like, do we have like, whoa, do we have? You have a second?
No.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Hi. I was.
Over time. That's good, that's we showed very nicely.